I think we're going to get started. We may, and we'll at least get through call to the audience, and then we may take another break if Supervisor Valadez hasn't arrived. And with that, I want to call to order the January 2nd meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. This is our first meeting of the year. Welcome to all of you who are here. And as a point of personal privilege, well, actually, let's do roll call, and then I'll do a point of personal privilege. Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
Present.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez? Chair Bronson?
Here.
Let the record reflect that Supervisor Valadez is absent. All other members are present.
All right. Before we stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, I want to -- oh, he made it. Let the record show that Supervisor Valadez is present now. I want to just take a moment of personal privilege. Over this past weekend, Mayor Rothchild's father passed away. Let's keep Mayor Rothchild and his family in our thoughts and prayers, and certainly we send our condolences to the family. And now we'll have the invocation to be offered by Reverend Robert Hendrickson, St. Philip's in the Hills Episcopal Church, with the Pledge of Allegiance to follow, led by Supervisor Christie. Please rise.
I think ultimately, our lives are not our own, and as we dedicate ourselves faithfully to work on behalf of others, let us pray. Omari God, in you we live and move and have our being. We humbly pray you so to guide and govern us by your spirit, that in all the cares and occupations of this life, we may not forget you, but may remember that we are ever walking in your sight. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of our flag.
With our flag, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. And do we have pause for pause? Ms. Lesher, do we have? No, no pause for pause. Okay, then let's move on to call to the public. And I want to, Ms. Lesher, you may want to say a few words. I mean, we did our grand opening on the 28th, and we have our new facility up and running.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, and thanks to all of you who were there. We did have a ribbon cutting on the first phase of the new animal care facility, and we encourage everyone to go out and take a look. It is at, the first about 45,000 square feet are finished, and it's a terrific new facility, and a lot of happy dogs and cats out there. We had some great times during the holidays, and thanks so much for being part of that presentation.
It really is an amazing facility, and if you get a chance, you want to volunteer your time to walk a dog or pet a cat, or just come visit the new facility, I think you'll be very, very pleased with our, with how our bond money was spent. And with that, we're going to move to call to the audience. You have three minutes. I ask that you abide by the rules of civility. Roger Score.
Board members, we want to be civil. My brother-in-law once told me I was like the wild mustings. They keep coming in and kicking down our fences. And he goes, well, he goes, I have respect for them. He goes, we're castrating the rest of them next week. So when it comes to civility, how civil should we be? When you spend over 15 million of our tax money on worldview, which I don't know who in their right mind would ever pay $75,000 to go up in a balloon. What they did was so bad that the local media had to cover for them. They tried to act like it was a classified operation. Well, I know it wasn't a military operation, so how could it be classified? Why would you go up in a balloon that they can't even tell you if it was hydrogen in the balloon? Well, of course it was hydrogen. Hydrogen explodes. So you've lost that money. But to recover it, what we do is we go to the Affordable Care Act, and we get a clause in there that they'll pay for assisted suicide. So that way, when you pay the $75,000, you get your suicide, your cremation, and your ashes spread, all in one issue. They say that two people went in because they had hearing damage, so they had to go in and get checked up, checked on. Then after that, they say there is no injuries. Well, what do they classify as an injury? People working at Raytheon, where they have explosive missiles right next door, had ceiling tiles coming down, and I know some of them, and they got a pretty good scare. Neighboring houses had windows broke out. This is all on county property. How much liability are you putting taxpayers at by allowing these people who aren't really capable of doing the job they're trying to do? They called this a success. They said it was a successful test. Well, what if it wasn't successful? What if it really went bad? How many people would be dead? How much damage would be done? I mean, if they blow up a balloon, break windows, knock ceiling tiles out, have people get injured on sight, what happens when this thing has a disaster out there? So, I mean, I think this is the best we can work out of there, is assisted suicide. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Lannon?
My name is Albert Lannon. I live in Picture Rocks. I'm here to lodge a formal complaint pursuant to the Pima County Regulatory Bill of Rights, wherein persons adversely affected by district statements that implement, interpret, or prescribe law or policy may seek redress. Since the complaint is against the county administrators' office and Charles Huckleberry, it would be inappropriate to direct the complaint to him, so it is addressed to the Chair of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, since the board has ultimate authority for the affairs of the county and the county administrator reports to and acts under its direction. County policy, as expressed in Resolution 2007-343, quote, "opposes the construction of any new highways in or around the county that have the stated purpose of bypassing the existing Interstate 10, as it is believed that the environmental, historic, archaeological, and urban form impacts could not be adequately mitigated," end quote. The resolution specifically discusses the Avra Valley as worthy of protection. The county administrator and his staff, for at least five years, have ignored, violated, missed, and reinterpreted 2007-343, making new county policy not adopted by this board without notice or public discussion in favor of an Avra Valley route for a proposed Interstate 11. Such contrary actions adversely affect me, as a highway would adversely affect thousands of others with air noise and light pollution, wildlife disruption, and loss of tourist revenues to be made up from our tax dollars. Pima County appearing to be in favor of it has resulted in the Avra Valley route being one of only two to remain on the table in ADOT's Tier One Environmental Impact Statement Study. Using county resources to create and publish maps and other support documents adversely affects me by misusing my tax dollars. Losing the present peaceful enjoyment of Saguaro National Park, Tucson Mountain Park, the Desert Museum, Kit Teak, and Ironwood Forest will adversely affect me. Ignoring the will of the voters who rejected the Sonoran Corridor, originally known on county maps as part of I-11, adversely affects me by telling me if I vote in the bond election means nothing, so why bother voting? That bypass is convoluted to give a planned diamond ventures development a free access highway in violation of Pima County personnel rules of conduct. That also adversely affects me by misspending my tax dollars, as well as demonstrating that the rule of law does not apply to the county administrator's office. I close by noting that about 90% of over 3,000 comments from the public, your constituents, to ADOT this past summer opposed any Avra Valley I-11, and less than one-half of 1% favored it. Citations and evidence are in the formal complaint. I look forward to your response within the required 15 business days. Thank you.
Just for clarification, have you filed an official claim?
That's my, you got it.
Then that's not, then you need to submit that. This is your official?
Yes.
Okay, then you need to submit that to the clerk.
I did give it to the clerk.
Oh, you've got it? Okay.
I have copies, with copies for.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jerry Odeboni?
Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name is Jerry Odeboni. I live in Meroa Valley. I thought it shocking this ripoff of the taxpayers. We watched the Arizona Daily Independence video of a giant fireball explosion across the sky. Worldview used hydrogen gas instead of helium in their balloon, putting the taxpayers on the hook for their bad behavior. Why did we build Worldview in the buffer zone that was a protection for Raytheon? I think we paid something for somebody's friends for that property. That shocking explosion blew the tiles onto the heads of Raytheon employees one mile away. Also, the airport is approximately one mile away. Now, apparently, a dangerous airport to fly out of. Many people tell me from now on, they will shuttle up to Phoenix. Again, you are wasting taxpayers' dollars for liability, so your cronies get paid. It's only a matter of time that Pima County gets sued for Worldview's reckless behavior, and we, the taxpayers, will be forced to pay again for Worldview. Unbelievable. Thank God for Arizona Daily Independent, as the rest of the Tucson fake news tried to cover it up, until Arizona Daily Independent exposed the truth by showing the video. I expect Pima County to investigate the hydrogen explosion, because the taxpayer should not be held liable for Worldview's recklessness. Do they even know what they're doing? Everyone needs to go online and Google Arizona Daily Independent and search Worldview and Worldview explosion to learn the truth, and how Worldview has ripped off the taxpayers and caused a dangerous scenario. Obviously, they didn't pay attention in history class about the Hindenburg disaster due to hydrogen gas in 1937. Thank you.
Keith Van Heenigan?
My name is Keith Van Heenigan, and I'm here to speak, as many are, about corruption here in Pima County. See, we've had this long-term Democrat majority, plus one old Republican wannabe, and Chuck Huckleberry, the master of all roads. Well, why don't our roads look the way they do, Chuck? See, people out here in the world, in Ward One, we've been looking at the budget for the last 10 years hard, and along with a little help from Ally Miller, some other people, we've found hundreds of millions of dollars in waste, fraud, abuse, nepotism, graft. Anybody say wastewater lately? And we wonder why we're one of the poorest counties in the entire country. Then we have the issue with Worldview, which is a tragedy. See, I go back, my grandfather went back to pre-NASA days. He built bombers in World War II. Then he went to NACA, then he went to NASA. His last project was the space shuttle. On the other side of the family, it's the military and national security. National security states this, look it up, anything with one, one thousandth the explosive power of a nuclear weapon should be looked at as a terrorist event if outside the lines of a said business. Do they in fact make hydrogen bombs? Because that's what was exploded, an improvised explosive device. People involved, Mark Kelly, Ms. Pointer, Mr. McCollum, Chuck Huckleberry, Dr. Stern, formerly of NASA, need to be investigated. It's over $15 million wasted. We're now the laughingstock of the entire country. I'm glad I spent my Christmas in Albuquerque. It was much more sane, and please don't compare yourselves to that county, because they've got you going away. And how close is that really to Raytheon and missiles and planes and the airport?
Your term has expired.
Have a nice day.
Christopher Cole?
I hope your holidays were nice. My name is Christopher Cole, and I am no longer the first vice chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. I am the chairman. Scott Stewart had to resign due to ill health. I'm also going to talk about Worldview for a moment. If a hydrogen balloon blowing up halfway through a flight is a success, I'd hate to see what a failure is. Worldview is not going to make it. We all know that multimillionaires are not going to pay huge amounts of money so that they can fall from 100,000 feet to their death. But the failure of Worldview can have one positive, one positive outcome. The husband of Gabrielle Giffords can use his contacts in NASA, and maybe we can start making lunar rovers here in Pima County, because those are going to be the only sort of vehicle that's going to be able to drive on Pima County streets and roads. You can whine all you want about what the legislature did or didn't do, but a real leader doesn't whine. You can't control the legislature. You can try and influence them, but you cannot control them. A real leader will pick up the slack and get the job done. Your job is the infrastructure, and if you get the roads and all of the other infrastructure up and running properly, that will bring more jobs than Worldview did, and there'll be longer-lasting jobs. I doubt Worldview is going to last another two years. And even if no jobs come in because everybody is so happy with the roads and the sewers and so forth, at least they're not going to be fleeing. Fix the roads. Right now, you're saddled with an office building that, when Worldview goes away, is going to be in competition with all of the other empty office buildings in Pima County. The equipment, maybe you can sell for pennies on the dollar. The launch pad, maybe you could turn that into a outdoor square dance festival location. Worldview is a failure. The roads are a failure. Be leaders.
Thank you.
Fix the roads.
Your term has expired. Russell Trias?
New year brings new thinking and hope and opportunities to talk about where our money's being spent, where our money's not being spent. These are great things for us, especially standing on this side. The truth will set you free, and you will be free indeed. Amen.
I don't know if that was a cellphone, but just a reminder to everybody, please mute your cellphones while we're in session. Thank you.
It sounds like a prank call.
It might have been. But sometimes, there's one little sound on mine, an alert sound that sounds like that, so. Edward, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry, welcome to 2018. It's a brand-new year, so I wanted to start things off by talking about the same old roads and about our county budget. Specifically today, I want to talk about one woman's outsized role in our county budget woes. I don't think she's here this morning, but most of us know her name. I'm, of course, referring to our county attorney, Barbara Law. Nearly a quarter of our county budget is devoted to legal and jail systems. At a time when the state faces, or claims to face, significant budget shortfalls, the Department of Corrections is the only state department that has seen substantial funding increases over the past decade. This directly impacts us through nearly $40 million in court and legal-related costs shifted onto Pima County, according to Mr. Huckleberry's budget memoranda, as well as through millions more dollars in state shared HERF revenues that have been appropriated for DPS and DOC-related expenses at the expense of our county roads. Why is it that over 1% of Arizona's adult population is currently behind bars, either at the DOC or in local jails, a higher percentage even than China? Why is it that, according to a piece written by Pima Public Defender Joel Feynman, did Ms. Law decide to charge one man accused of petty theft with 24 counts of the crime, carrying a maximum prison sentence of 60 years? 60 years for someone with no priors. I know first-degree murders carry 40 years, shooting at cops, 25, rape, 20. 60 years for an act of petty theft. At an average cost per prisoner in the state of Arizona, Ms. Law's one act of appearing tough on crime was prepared to cost state and county taxpayers nearly $1.6 million. Pima County's share of the DOC budget based on prisoners is about $126 million. I'm not saying all this money is wasted, and some of it's going to put some really bad people locked away for a very long time. But I think it's worth asking why we're spending so much money on this prison state. I think it's worth asking why Supervisors Christine Miller, Miller, think it's okay to spend our public taxpayers' dollars helping CCA, Geo Group, and other for-profit prison companies make money at our expense. They reaffirmed this with their vote at the last meeting. I just want to say, $126 million per year sure would go a long way towards fixing those blankety-blank roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McGrath?
I'm Michael McGrath. I'm counsel for the Rialto Theater Foundation. With me today is Curtis McCrery, the executive director. I'd like to thank the board for its continued examination of the 2016 and 2017 taxes that have been assessed and not rebated against the theater. I want to reiterate what I told you on the 19th of December. I will continue to be available, as will our staff, to work with your legal counsel or the folks at the county assessor's office. I received, after I appeared before you on the 19th, a workup, again, from the assessor's office, in which they took the position that we were not qualified substantively for a tax deduction. There can be no doubt amongst reasonable people that the theater falls within the exempt use statute provided by the state legislature, and the assessor's suggestion that we don't own the property is belied by the actual records of the county. I know you have a couple of procedural matters. First, you'll discuss with counsel whether you waive the attorney-client privilege and get substantively to our motion to abate taxes. I would just like to say to you, I have had the opportunity to speak a few times with Mr. Flag. We have provided him the documents that I believe establishes beyond doubt that we have timely filed with the Board of Supervisors an abatement request for both '16 and '17. And if you're satisfied with that, we're happy to either return to a discussion with the assessor or have you abate the taxes as the statute provides you can do. But I'd like to suggest to you, when the assessor tells you on December 18th that we don't own the property or the theater is not entitled to an exemption, it really is beyond, I think, rational consideration of the issue. Again, thank you for your continued look at this. Our 100-person, 600-member not-for-profit is very much dependent upon our cash flow to continue to program and pay our 100-plus employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Bickel?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry, my name is Brian Bickel. I'm a resident of incorporated Pima County. Brand-new year, unfortunately, same old problems. Just a few facts that I'd like to share with you and with the gallery as relates to roads and funds available for roads repair. In fiscal year '06-'07, HERF payments from the state treasurer to the Pima County treasurer were just over $44 million. VLT payments in that same period of time were just over $41 million, which in theory says we have just about $85 million a year to fix our roads. Unfortunately, according to statute, that VLT payment is an 80-20 split, with 80% going into the general fund and 20% going into the HERF portion, which means about $8 million of that $41 million went into road repair. So we actually have $52 million, not 85 million. In FY '16-'17, we got $45 million for HERF, and we got $42 million for VLT. And with that same 80-20 split, about $8 million went into road repair, so we actually have about $53 million for road repair. Of that $53 million, $19 million goes to debt service. You had nothing to do with that. We did that to ourselves. That's the 1997 bond issue that the voters put into place, and the only people currently sitting on the dais that could have had anything to do with that are Chair Bronson and Mr. Huckleberry. Nobody else was on the board when that happened. In addition to that, we have a half-cent sales tax that funds the RTA. Over the past 10 years, between the bond issue and the RTA, we've put, on average, $100 million worth of new infrastructure into service in Pima County, with absolutely no provision to fund for repair of that. And as you can see, we're not getting any more HERF money now than we did 10 years ago, so we keep adding to the roads that we have to maintain without coming up with a provision to repair them. As we get ready to look at continued funding of the RTA or a voter-approved extension of the RTA, please make sure we include ongoing repair in that legislation, as opposed to just building new infrastructure that we have no means to pay for upkeep on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our call to the public. And we do have one change to the agenda, and that's the regular agenda, page five, item 18, Real Property Grant of Easement. The items should also include the following. This item requires a unanimous vote of approval by the Board of Supervisors. If there are no objections, we'll so amend the agenda. Hearing no objections, the agenda is amended. That brings us now to the Board of Coop. There are no executive session items. There are no special proclamations. This is a This is an interesting way to start the new year. So we're going to move immediately into Board of Supervisors, sitting as other boards, the Flood Control District Board, items 6 and 7. What's the pleasure of the board on these items?
Madam Chair, I'd like to divide the question. They're two separate items.
Item 6, repairing habitat mitigation, I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 7, Diablo Village, 2018 development agreement and sales agreement. This is related to Agenda's items number 16 and 17 on the consent. Is related to Agenda items number 16 and 17 and Consent Calendar item number 19. I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Objections?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I had to do a lot of reading on this one. And what I found on this is kind of disturbing. We are now part of these, where back in 2007, this developer, which is Diablo Village Partners and title Security Agent is the trustee, conveyed to Pima County about 118 acres, is my understanding, the West lots. And they conveyed it to us for the taxes and fees owed to the county for roughly $1.5 million. And there are several issues on this. And now they want to give us back four acres, or they want us to convey back to them four acres, of which they had paid $29,250 to excavate some fill material out of that particular area. The Flood District has said this appraised value for these four acres is $25,000. So if I take and apply that, and I understand times are different, but this was back in 2007, the land values were a little different back then. But we paid roughly $1.5 million. And if you take that in today's value, it's about $770,000. And we want to convey that back to them and give them credit for the $29,250 that they paid for excavation material. And also, so it's basically a swap, but we're also crediting them for $4,250, or excuse, yeah, $4,250 of credit so that they can use that toward any payment of fees due to the county. We already paid for this land once, and now we're giving it back to them. And there's a lot of issues with this as I look through it. We're gonna, they're gonna build a basin. And we're gonna, we have these 114 acres left that we're gonna build a park on. Is that correct?
Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think what's missing in this discussion is that the two roadways and the conveyance back for the right-of-way for the roadways, they were originally planted. Developer's going to build them at his own cost, and those basically become the primary access points to a new regional park.
Those two roadways?
Correct.
Yeah, they're giving those back to Pima County. Is that correct, conveying them back?
They're being dedicated back after the roads are improved.
Okay. And then, as I, bottom line, as I look through this, I just feel like this developer's getting a park built for free. Other developers don't get it. They have to pay for their own. And so I'm going to object to this. And I do note that these are some roads in these subdivision are going to be milled and filled as a result of the vote a few weeks ago on roads when other districts weren't allowed to do milling and filling. So I feel like this is a whole lot of preferential treatment going on for these two individuals, and I'm going to vote no.
Is there any other discussion? I'll call the question. Any objections? One objection. Any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries four to one. Moving on to the Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Library District Board. Item 8 is an acceptance of a grant. And I'll move the item. Motion and a second discussion. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the Consent Calendar. What's the pleasure of the board? Would anybody like to divide the question? Supervisor Miller.
I would like to divide the question and vote on items 3, 5, 6, and 7 separately.
3, 5, 6, and 7. Thank you. I'll move the remainder of consent. Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 3, I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller.
I object.
Any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item 5, McMahon and Associates Design Services. I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I object to this because this is $1.5 million to do the regional tournament complex at Keno Sports Complex. And this is, these were certificates of participation. And if we're going to issue certificates of participation, I believe they should go to roads.
I object as well.
Any further objections? Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion carries three to two. Moving on to item 6, purchase order, Arizona Wastewater Industries. I'll move the item.
Madam Chair, the question I had on this, and I don't know if anyone here can answer this question, but I noted that this truck is $411,000. And then it says the sales tax, and this is being purchased in Phoenix, 8.6% on the first $10,000 and 8.3% on the remaining balance. I got an unofficial answer for someone over the weekend that it was some sort of a carve-out for the car dealers on sales tax in Phoenix. Is that correct, or does anyone know?
Mr. Huckleberry? Let me, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't know. We can certainly find out, but it's such a small amount. I know that there's another carve-out that just occurred in Pinellas County.
Pinellas County for the RTA. Yeah. Yeah. I was just curious if anyone knew that, otherwise I don't object to this item.
Okay, and if we, actually, I'd like, if we can investigate that and then get the information to all the board members. There are no objections, motion carries. Moving on to 7. This is courtesy Chevrolet. I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, again, I can approve $706,000 for 20 electric vehicles when our roads are in such ill-repair. Thank you.
I object as well.
Two objections. Any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries three to two. Moves us back to the regular agenda with the Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Board of Supervisors, items 10A and B. This is a discussion whether or not to waive attorney-client privilege regarding the Rialto Theater petition. What's the pleasure of the board on these, on this?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll move item A to waive the attorney-client privilege.
For item A only? Just item A only, just a point. Okay, I will second that motion. Any discussion? Any objection?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
When you waive the attorney-client privilege, is that our discussion in executive session? Or was it the? It's the, it doesn't refer to any memorandum.
It's the legal advice, and I think, did you put that in writing as I?
Madam Chair, no, but the waiver of attorney-client privilege would allow us to have a discussion in public about the same issues, not subject to attorney-client privilege.
But it doesn't waive what we discussed in executive session?
The statute protects the discussion in executive session, but the board could vote to waive the privilege to allow us to discuss the same issues in public.
Okay, I've just never dealt with this before. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to waive. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, we have waived the privilege regarding the legal advice. And I had asked that we put this on because I am still confused, receiving different information from the folks at Rialto and then from the county assessor. And as I understood from the county attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, you think there is a remedy for at least one of those tax years that does not include the Board of Supervisors?
Madam Chair, there are a number of different ways a taxpayer can bring a challenge to an exemption determination. It's conceivable that the error correction statutes would provide another means of going back to 2017 or 2016. That does, as I understand, that those don't go through the board. I'm not an expert on that process, but I believe that process starts with the assessor's office. The process being implemented here is a different statute which deals with the board's ability to forgive the failure to comply with statutory requirements in seeking an exemption.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, may I ask the county attorney to explain the error correction statute? Or give us some?
I'm not, it looks like he's not comfortable doing, but I will ask.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, I'm not a tax expert, so I'll concede that right away. And the tax statutes are pretty Byzantine. But my understanding is that the error correction process allows you to go back to prior tax years, and the courts have said that under certain circumstances, that can allow you to bring up issues like exemptions on the premise that you're correcting a past error in the tax rules. As far as the specifics of the process, I believe it starts with the assessor, and I'd be hesitant to go any further than that because it's just not my area of expertise.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I have a question again to county attorney. There's been talk in past instances about similar situations that the assessor would not recognize the legitimacy of the board's authority to waive any exemptions or to allow for exemptions. Should we, as a board, decide to accept the foundation's petition for waiver? Do you anticipate that this could be protested by the county assessor?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I don't want to speak for the assessor, obviously. It is my understanding that the assessor has taken the position that only the assessor can determine whether a property is exempt. And so these statutes, particularly the one that's at issue here is 4211153, the argument, as I understand it, is that the taxpayer has to be exempt in order to have the waiver of the statutory process forgiven. And it's the assessor's interpretation, as I understand it, and I think it's a reasonable reading of the statute, that the board doesn't get to make that determination of whether the property is exempt to begin with, that that determination has to be made by the assessor. There's an argument to the contrary under the statute, but that's my understanding of what the assessor's position is.
And just to follow up on Supervisor Christie's question, I have the same question. You said there's a reasonable, there could be another interpretation that would allow the board. Were the board to vote for the, to waive, I mean, to vote for the exemption or to grant the petition, what is the risk exposure, the liability? The county, the county assessor would then sue us?
Madam Chair, that's, I think that's a possible outcome. I don't, again, I don't want to speak for the assessor and what he would do in a particular circumstance, but.
Do you believe he has the ability to sue us, should he disagree with our actions?
Madam Chair, I think that the assessor could certainly file a suit. The question would be whether he has standing to bring a suit and file against the board. No court has addressed that under this statute, to my understanding. So it's hard to, it's hard to give an answer any better than really a coin flip on that.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if we decided as a board to grant the waiver and the assessor decided to sue the board, what would happen to the status of the petition and the responsibility of the taxes in the interim if there is any lawsuit?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, I think that in terms of the taxes, it's my understanding that most challenges to taxes, the taxes have to be paid before, during, in order to continue litigation. Under that posture, again, I don't know whether a court or whether the statutes specifically address if the board were to have granted the waiver and the assessor were to bring a lawsuit, to which I assume the taxpayer would be a party as a defendant. I just, I don't know whether the courts would require the taxes to be paid in the interim in that.
So in reality, the Rialto Theater folks are damned if they do, damned if they don't because they're going to have to be responsible for the payment even if we, as a board, grant the waiver because of the anticipated lawsuit from the assessor?
Well, Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, I think in general, a taxpayer is going to be required to pay taxes during the pendency of a challenge. That's just a fairly broad principle across Title 42.
And if we don't grant the waiver, then they're going to be responsible for the taxes?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, unless there's some other avenue taken to successfully challenge the exemption determination.
Can I stay, can I stay this or not?
Madam Chair, I don't, in terms of paying the taxes while this is all pending, I don't know whether the error correction statutes require the taxes to be paid during the pendency of a challenge. In general, that's the case with Title 42. If you're challenging a determination, whether it's valuation or exemption, taxes generally have to be paid during the pendency of a challenge and then can be refunded at the end if you win.
Thank you, and I think Supervisor Miller, you had a question?
Madam Chair, Rialto Theater's been around a long time. Have they had exemptions in the past? And what happened? Did this just change hands a few years ago? Or what, why did this suddenly become an issue?
It's my understanding, and perhaps the gentleman who spoke can correct me if I'm wrong, there were some new hires at the county assessor's office who made this determination.
So they changed the exemption status?
Is that, am I correct? You might.
Yes, again, my name is Grant, counsel for the Rialto Theater. Supervisor Miller, the foundation of 501(c)(3) acquired the property in June of 2015. Prior to that time, we had received an exemption consistently since the existing foundation took over in 2004 for adverse personal property taxes, which have the same standard as exemptions for real property taxes. As Chair Bronson correctly stated, when we submitted the documents, we were confronted with a change of personnel at the assessor's office. And again, I have, I'm sure everybody's sick of me filing papers with them, including your board chair and your counsel or your board clerk. But I keep providing these documents showing to the assessor saying, "We're a 501(c)(3)," and under the statute that counsel just referred to, so long as we are a 501(c)(3), we don't have to be determined to be exempt or not. If we're a 501(c)(3), you folks have the ability to determine whether we're entitled to an exemption or not, or a waiver of the taxes. You don't have to determine we're exempt. That's right, a waiver. And the only thing you need to find is that we're a 501(c)(3), and I don't think that's ever been disputed. The other thing I'd mention, and you have very able counsel, but under the error correction statute, if you declined our remedy, we would indeed have to pay the taxes, roughly $40,000, and then proceed with litigation. My understanding of the statute, and again, you have able counsel that can look at that, if you determined not to assess the taxes against us, our belief is that we would not have to pay. The statute just says, "The Board of Supervisors pursuant to subsection B has granted the rebate and no taxes are due." So I don't, our interpretation. So I don't, our interpretation, again, is that we would not have to pay in that instance. And the other issue, as I often say to courts who I appear before, I sure hope people don't appeal this kind of stuff. You've got to look at whether the assessor's going to initiate litigation, but this is, again, as I said before, not something that we think reasonable people disagree with. The Rialto's had an exemption for years, so I've taken too much of your time, but if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
So what happens, let's just say the board today decides to grant the waiver, but what happens next year? Are you right back at square one?
I'm not sure, because we plan on the first Monday of this month, shortly, to file our exemption application with the county assessor for 2018 taxes. And based upon the fact that we're a 501(c)(3) and this is a theater, we would hope that some of the procedural issues raised by the assessor in the past would not be raised. So our hope is that by timely filing in January the documents with the assessor, that there won't be a dispute.
So that's his dispute, is that it wasn't timely? So he doesn't want to grant the...
Well, he has taken that position. We've provided your counsel with the documents we filed with the Board of Supervisors, showing that we've timely filed with you. But he has also objected, saying, "You don't own the theater, and you're not using it for an exempt purpose," which are the facts that are very difficult for any of us to wrap our heads around, since we've always been exempt in the past.
Always been a 501(c)(3) and...
And always used it for the theatrical and artistic and dance provisions that are provided by the state legislature. So my hope is that if we timely file with the assessor the application next Monday, that we won't have to bother you in 2018, and the assessor will see that, just like we've always been, we're entitled to the exemption going forward. I hope I'm not being overly optimistic, but that's our hope.
Yeah, so he says you didn't file for the exemption in a timely manner. Are you saying you didn't file in a timely manner?
Under A, provision A of the statute, we did not timely file.
With the assessor?
With the assessor. But under B, we did timely file with the board. Both for '16 and '17. And what's so difficult for us is you got something from the assessor on the 18th of December saying, "They never filed." And they wouldn't, even if they had filed, been entitled to an exemption. And that's where the lack of communication here is. Again, it's difficult for any of us to understand. We do own the theater. We've provided them the deed. We are a 501(c)(3). We've provided that. The lobby and the theater are the same operation, if any of you are...
You couldn't operate the theater without the lobby.
We wouldn't have the ability to do that. That's ingress, egress, public restrooms, fire escapes, all that kind of stuff. So there's no doubt, I don't think, there never has been a doubt. If you're part of the 125,000 people that came through the theater last year, you know it's one building, it's owned by one entity, it's a 501(c)(3). So again, thank you for wrestling with this. I know you have many issues to deal with, but it's quite important for our employees and our theater. So if there's any other questions, or if I can work with Mr. Flag, as I've done very well in the last couple of weeks, I'm ready to do so. But we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to make a motion that the board grant the petition for a waiver.
There's two petitions, there's A and B.
All right. I would like to make a motion that the board grant the waiver as requested under items A and B as a waiver of real property taxes.
On item number 11?
Yes.
We, okay, I haven't called that item yet. Let me just move to that item, then you can make your motion.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Supervisors, under item 11 on the agenda, sections A and B, grant the waiver of real property as requested by the Rialto Theater Foundation for tax year 2016.
Madam Chair, don't we first need to do the reconsideration vote?
Yes.
Yes, it's a request for reconsideration. And so you're, actually, you can't.
I have to do it a third time.
You can, no, you can't, because you voted no.
You voted no.
I, I will move for reconsideration. Is there a second? Motion, and it's, thank you Supervisor Miller for correcting me. I forgot, thank you. There's a motion for reconsideration. Supervisor Elias.
I don't really have a problem reconsidering this item, but it's complicated, and there's a number of different sides. There's a lot of paper that's been passed back and forth between everybody. The foundation's lawyer is here today, leading the discussion. Seems a little strange to me, but that's okay. But I think we need to have a county attorney present who's better versed in this issue, and this issue specifically. So I'd like to do a reconsideration, but I'd like us to meet and try and work some of this stuff out, because frankly, I think there's ways to work this out between now and then that'll work for everybody, and so we don't have to worry about coming back on appeal or any of those kind of things. I think as a practical matter, I understand the argument that you're making, and I don't disagree with it, but I think we ought to take some time and let's have some more discussion, so that the board feels more comfortable. Because I've got to tell you, folks, this is opening a can of worms that has been before this board for a long, long time, and so...
Well, it's conflicting statutes or statutes that are, that lack clarity, because the board appears to have authority. But the assessor is essentially saying, declining that we have that authority. So there is a dichotomy there. But there is a motion on the floor for reconsideration. That just gets us to the fact where we can talk about these two items. There's a motion on the floor to reconsider. Are there any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. We will reconsider. Supervisor, go ahead Supervisor Elias.
As far as a resolution to the matter and the question of waiving those real property taxes today, I'd like to continue that item until our second meet in February, our second meeting in February, excuse me, I misspoke.
Continue it, and with direction to do what?
I'd like to have these sides meet together with our county attorneys and...
With the assessor?
And the assessors as well, too. Yes, I think that's absolutely critical. So they can find out, and we can witness what's going on firsthand from the whole deal, okay? Typically, if the county attorney thinks that there needs to be an executive session before we hear the final resolution of this, I think that would probably be appropriate as well.
Yeah, we don't need it now till we have more, yeah. Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, I certainly don't have an objection to the motion. The only question that I did have was on these matters, is the county attorney representing the assessor, or is it an outside counsel is representing the assessor?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Valdez, on this matter, the county attorney's office does not represent the assessor. And, you know, it may be a matter in which we'd have a conflict in that representation, in which case the assessor could be represented by outside counsel if necessary.
So would it be more appropriate, instead of directing that the county attorney be present, that outside counsel for the assessor be present?
Because he'll be representing us.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Valdez, as I understand the request, probably we would be present on behalf of the county, and if the assessor's present and needs counsel, then we can arrange to have outside counsel present for the assessor.
Madam Chair, Mr. Flag, and that doesn't represent a conflict, correct?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Valdez, if the assessor has outside counsel, there should be no conflict on this matter.
Okay, we got everything clarified. There's a motion to continue to second meeting in February, was that correct? Okay, motion, go ahead Supervisor Christie.
I understand Supervisor Elias's motion. I think it has good sense. My only thought on this whole process is, it appears that there's going to be some sort of a showdown between the board and the assessor at some point. This is as good a case as any to test it and to resolve it. And that's why I made my original inappropriate motion to go ahead and waive the petition. However, my question would be to the Rialto folks, I don't know if I can address that question to them.
The Rialto?
Rialto, sorry.
No, Rialto is a race track, no.
Thank you.
You can try, we'll see if it's appropriate. What's the question?
Would you be accepting that delay for a discussion with the assessors?
He prefer, I suppose he'd rather not see a delay, but I'm not sure he's got much of a choice.
I enjoy coming to visit with you folks. And I understand the diplomacy that Supervisor Elias has suggested. We are happy to work with anybody. I do believe you can look at the substance...
You need to get yourself up there to the microphone if you're going to continue to speak, sir.
Thank you. Again, Michael McGrath, counsel for the Rialto Theater, and I'm more than happy to work with the county attorney with whom I've worked easily on this stuff. I can't get anybody at the assessor's office that really wants to speak to me about these issues. So we're happy to do it, though I would suggest to you that if anybody looks at the substantive objections, are we a 501(c)(3) and is it a theater? You have the power, and if you've put me out of my misery by granting the exemption, we don't have to waste a lot of resources. But I understand for taking time also. So our request is that you grant our exemption, and should you choose to continue this matter, we'll be happy to cooperatively work and constructively work for the right resolution.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller.
The Board of Supervisors doesn't have the authority to grant the exemption. We just have the authority to waive.
To waive, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's confusing, and we've got potentially conflicting statutes, or at least differing legal interpretations of those statutes. And this, again, is a conundrum we find ourselves often in. You know, we've had it with the county attorney, where we have row officers who, we're the ones who write the checks, we're the ones that give the money to operate their individual departments, but they, in some instances, and against what we would consider, we as a board, we consider appropriate policies, may not act, at least in the board's view, in the taxpayer's best interest. So, but this is the nature of counties with the independent row officers, and one, you know, these are issues we face all the time with the row officers who don't come under our direct supervision. Okay, so there is... Supervisor.
I think, taking a more diplomatic kind of approach to this is probably what's good. I've never heard a sitting supervisor say that we should set a course that puts us in direct conflict with a row officer.
Well, it doesn't serve the taxpayer.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, I'm kind of surprised to hear Supervisor Christie say that. It seemed almost like a threat, and it seems like not a prudent course of action.
Thank you Supervisor Elias. If there's no further discussion, there is a motion on the floor. Are there any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. And just so, item 11, we have concluded. And now we move on to human resources, item 12. What's pleasure of the board? Well, let's move item, if nobody has a problem with combining item 12 and 13, I'll move those two items. Motion and a second. Any discussion, any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to item 14, this is unfinished business with Catherine Kellner. Since we haven't brought outside counsel on yet, I'll move to continue this item to our next meeting, provided we have outside counsel on board, and he's reviewed this expenditure.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, Mr. Flag, will this delay cause any hardship on the county attorney's office?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Valdez, I don't think so, this particular item.
Is there any other questions? Any objections? Motion carries. Moving on to Fair Horse Racing Meet 2016. This is, sets the calendar, and it's subject to final approval by the Arizona Department of Racing. I'll move the item. Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to items 16 and 17, we've dealt with these items before. I'll move those two items. Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller, I assume you object?
I object, yeah.
Any further objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Item 18 requires unanimous approval. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I...
Oops, sorry. Madam Chair, I'd move item 18.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. We're now under transportation. Items 19 and 20, I'll move the items.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. We now move on to hearings. These are hearings, franchise license permits. Item 21 is a liquor license. Item 22 is fireworks permit. I'll move those items. All right, wait, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items at this time? If not, I move to close the public hearing and approve the items. Supervisor, and Supervisor Miller, I assume you're seconding? Yeah, Supervisor Elias.
Again, I'm concerned about the fireworks permit. It has been very dry. We've only had a little bit of rain in the middle of December, and before that, it hadn't rained since September. I'd at least like to check in with any fire district to see if they have any objections to this fireworks display. Before they get a permit.
Okay. Is that, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay, motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to item resources, human resources, this is a hearing, ordinance 2018-1. It is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, I move to close the hearing and approve the ordinance 2018-1 and item 23.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to item 24, this is a hearing, P17RZ00006, Wong Family LP, West Sumter Drive rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time in opposition? In opposition? If not, what's pleasure of the board? Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I move, excuse me, I move to close the public hearing and approve rezoning P17RZ00006, Wong Family, West Sumter rezoning, subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as standard and special conditions as recommended by staff.
Second. There's motion and a second, and you closed the public hearing, right? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to item 25, P17RZ00008, Landmark Title Trust 7792T, South Nokala Gallas Highway rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? If not, I'm going to move, we close the public hearing and approve, subject to standard and special conditions, as recommended by both the commission and the staff.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any objection? Hearing non, motion carries. That brings us to the addendum. Item 1, employment of outside counsel for racketeering funds review. Mr. Huckleberry, you put this item on the board. We had initially instructed you to contact the same attorney Mayor Copacouche was using for outside review, and that was already Eves. Have you been in discussion with Mr. Eves?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think I've sent the board a communication with regard to asking Mr. Eves about his plan and then his fee schedule. Talked to them on Friday, and he had a medical appointment today, just to follow up on, sounds like outpatient surgery. And I would suggest that, obviously, if the board continues to want to employ him, that I would give him a notice to come to the next board meeting on the 16th, and at that time, probably at the same time, if he wants to respond in writing prior to that, he can, and then the board can decide at that point specifically how to contract with Mr. Eves.
Okay. So we'll move this, then, ask that his employment, potential employment contract be put on the 16th agenda for approval, and then have him present to answer any questions. Is there any objection from board members? Is there any objection from board members? Okay. And then, I think that we received, I had, at the previous meeting, our last meeting in two thousand and seventeen, I had, prior to the meeting, asked the county attorney if the, if she would consider the use of RECO funds to pay legal fees for the outside counsel. She declined that. So I would then, in, as a corollary to this item, direct the county administrator, well, I think we need to get clarification from the state attorney general as to whether or not RECO funds, looking at the new statute, whether the new statute allows for the use of RECO funds to pay for legal fees for outside counsel. And I would direct that we ask for an opinion of the attorney general. And if, in the resulting opinion is negative that RECO funds cannot be used for that purpose, then I would ask that the attorney generals provide the specificity as to which part of the statute disallows the use of RECO funds, and would ask that his opinion include that. And then I would further direct our staff and the county administrator to get, seek clarification from the state legislature as to their intent when they amended this statute. And I'll make, I'll make that as, by direction, because, oh, we've got action in here, so I'll make that by, in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Elias.
I would move the remainder of the addendum, unless somebody wants to split it up.
Number two.
Number two, okay. Let's move, so you're going to move items three, four, and five, Supervisor Elias?
Sure.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item three, I'll move the, or item two, I'll move the item in resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one.
I object.
Any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries. And unbelievably, it's not even ten thirty, and we have concluded our meeting today. Happy New Year to everybody. We will see you on the sixteenth. We stand adjourned unless there are objections.